I'm Peter Brown from Tiny and Sons Glass. Tiny and Sons Glass was established in 1978 with my father and brother and I. We're at 575 Washington Street in Pembroke. We're certified and qualified to do all your windshield replacement and repair. Tiny and Sons Glass is a community-based business. We have 12 mobile vans that'll come to you. If the weather's bad, you can come here to the shop. We have a nice waiting area, TV, Wi-Fi, kid-friendly, pet-friendly. We also can move about 15, 20 cars a day through the shop. Perfect for you when the weather's bad. So come on down to Tiny and Sons Glass if you need your windshield replaced or repaired. Tiny and Sons Glass, 1-888-64-TINES, just call. Thank you.
Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through an audio recording, which will be used to ensure an accurate record of proceedings produced in the minutes of the meeting. All comments made in an open session will be recorded. We do not have anyone participating remotely tonight. First up is 346 Washington Street. But because it's not a public hearing and because we have a fairly simple matter coming up at 7:30, do we have anyone here from Protector Wire?
It looks like it. Should gather first.
Yes.
On Protector Wire, are they proposing a... Do they have a drawing they're gonna show us?
They're not changing anything from the original site plan.
How do we know that?
Because they're not asking for anything. Hi, are you here for Protector Wire?
Yes, Bill Hurley.
Hi, Bill.
How's it going?
Hi, Pat.
How's it going tonight?
Good.
Good. We're taking you guys early because we think it's gonna be fairly simple. Are you making any changes from the site plan that was approved by this planning board?
No.
From the minor modifications previously approved? We're still working off that drawing?
Exactly. We have that right here.
Okay.
If you'd like to take a look at it.
Well, we just wanted to know.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that there's nothing...
Changed. We've been having a lot of visitors.
For three days.
It's hard to keep track of everybody.
No, it's fine. It hasn't been built yet.
It was on the original plan.
What was on the plan with the minor modifications that were approved?
Oh, alright. Thank you.
Which is...
The approval of the minor modifications was...
2015.
And that went through an appeals.
This revision dated today or tomorrow?
Because they just got the variances from the ZBA.
Yeah, a year from...
Oh, it's 2017.
Yes, so it's a year old.
We had to look inside my jacket a couple times.
So that was on the original with this proposal, with this whole proposal? And that went for zoning, for a setback, and as a decision that's recorded. I think you have that.
Yeah, we have it. We have it under a package.
Oh, okay. And there was always the intent. This driveway was created during initial construction exactly the way it's feeding into the garage. So I think the delay was the zoning. Okay. I just don't remember it.
No, I don't either.
It came before us in 2015 with a minor modification to add that. And before...
Well, how long has the building been doing that?
Since 2010.
Really?
Yes.
That was in 2005.
It's amazing.
Wow, I was saying, five, six years.
We still think we're teenagers, so...
Correct. So the purpose of our meeting was to achieve a signature by the board for our application.
So I'll make a motion that we have the clerk sign the routing slip for Protector Wire.
Alright, we'll talk to him.
Alan Baker?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you very much.
So given that you guys didn't make any changes from the last time the board reviewed it, we thought we could take care of it quickly. That's why we...
We appreciate it.
Bring you in rather than wait. And this next one's gonna take away.
Twenty-six, 2018.
Yep. The year of our Lord, 2018.
Even though that's a little controversial, right?
I'll have to call you in the morning.
As to whether it starts with year one.
Correct. But I'm a radical.
We're not. Don't know what's supposed to talk politics, religion is sports. When we kind of...
I'm from Louisiana.
I know, that's what I said.
What's that is...
You see that above us and go, you know the revolution...
Oh, geez.
...in the pub.
It's fine, Sunday dinner.
Yeah, right? It's sport.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys. Have a great one.
Matthew, take your few shots. Appreciate it.
New Orleans, there isn't sense of...
Matt, do you know if Brian's coming?
Politics is...
Uh, Brian's... Sport. I doubt it.
He is in Massachusetts.
Yeah.
Well, Dan's not coming, Brian's not coming, and Jim probably isn't coming either. And Paul's not gonna vote.
I can't... Well, we can work with each other.
We can work with each other on the issues.
Yes, that's for later time.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, I guess we can always do the vote. Is Donald Gill coming in for 7:45? Yeah, I think so, yeah. Okay. So we have some...
They didn't answer, so...
We have less than a half an hour.
Well, Mr. Smith, I see Mr. Smith over there.
Do you wanna let them come in and... Do we have a... Well, let them come in and I can ask him. I mean, anybody can come in at any point.
Yeah, we don't necessarily need them.
We're in a public hearing. I mean, a public night, not...
Yeah, they can come in.
Anybody can come in whenever they want.
Yeah, so are you.
Yeah. It's like my executive session, so maybe trouble matter in this that we can get back to.
Hi.
Coming with a vaccine.
Are you the only neighbor here?
There were supposed to be more, but we're the only two, I don't know.
Oh, you're a neighbor as well? Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so tonight we were supposed to discuss the conditions that were part of the approval for 346 Washington Street site plan. Unfortunately, we only have three members of the board who can vote on this tonight because Paul Whitman had already abstained because you're... Because you're in the butter?
No, I'm not in the butter.
Oh, okay.
No.
Okay.
I abstained because I'm not gonna be running again, and I think this is gonna go much further than...
Your term.
My term, and I don't want it to get... I want it to be resolved by...
Other people.
Other people on the board.
Who have to stay responsible.
Correct.
Okay. So first I wanna check. We had a time period for issuing the decision. Do we have an extension on that on five?
Yes, we voted it last time.
Yes, I think now the deadline is March 27th, I believe.
Well, because I'm thinking that we may not be able... If we can't vote the conditions tonight, we're gonna have to actually have a vote on the conditions at the next meeting, but hopefully we can make progress towards writing the conditions tonight. So we just don't have a quorum for that one.
Alright.
Who can vote in... We need four people to vote in favor of the decision of the conditions. So we have some questions here.
Yeah, so you're sort of on top or almost at the top of all your forms. Is the program good for us?
So the first question is, Dan, are you going to have other businesses operating on the site? And are you gonna be able to make sure that the other businesses comply with the conditions you were willing to set for your own business?
Yes. Absolutely.
It is, so it's not...
Okay, but you do still intend to lease that space out of businesses?
He has three or four Indian small buildings. I just left like really two minutes ago.
Okay.
Or can you check?
Alright, thank you.
The address being shown on the sign for condition number two. So the deputy fire chief's comments about...
That should be something that the building inspector takes up.
Takes up with the sign.
Right.
Keep in mind that because there may be some fire risk with the mulch and with the amount of wood there, that it is being strongly recommended that you have the address on the signage so that fire engines can find you. If they're coming from another town, I think everybody in town will know. But you never know if someone's responding to the call from the other town and they don't know, right?
Yes. And that would be addressed in the applicable provisions of the town's bylaws and regulations?
Yes. Condition number five.
So the question was on Sunday hours?
Yeah.
Did you...
Yeah, I may have gotten confused about that. I'm not sure.
Well, why don't we make clear what the hours are from the top?
So we... So what was put into the draft conditions was that the operating hours would be no later... no more than six to eight on weekdays excluding holidays, 7:30 to 4:30 on Saturdays, close Sundays and holidays, but pickups and deliveries may take place between 7:30 and 4:30 those days. But...
And that's just for pickup and delivery, not for retail sale?
For retail sale.
So that's what pickup...
No processing. No processing during the weekend.
Okay. So pickups and deliveries mean retail sale?
Just the mulch, and it's a very short window.
Okay.
Very small season. I don't wanna be there any more Sundays than I have to be.
Yeah. So we shouldn't say the business shall be closed on Sundays?
Oh, no, okay.
Just for retail, homeowners picking up mulch?
Between 7:30 and 4:30 P.M.
So it's retail pickup and delivery?
Yeah.
Would there be any... So part of the issue here, in the sensitivity here with the neighbors, is to the truck traffic, right? So on Sundays, would there be truck traffic with those pickups?
Typically, Sundays, it's homeowners with little pickups, little trailers, sometimes the little one-ton dump trucks. It's hard to limit it, but to the size of the vehicle, because you're open, you're open. We can't slam the gate on.
But you only be operating your trucks. These would be homeowner vehicles.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Although we do do a little.
Yeah.
We do do a couple deliveries on Sundays with a little truck.
You do on Sundays?
Yeah.
Yes, it wouldn't be the 18-wheeler, it would be the 10-wheeler.
Right, it'd be like my wife's little truck there. She'd be six-wheeler, 10-wheeler.
How many hours every...
A fine little truck. Yeah.
So they're not creating it and selling it to landscapers or large projects. It's, you know, you, me, and everybody else who has a Sunday, a couple hours, they wanna spread some mulch is the target there.
It's typically contractors wouldn't work on Sundays.
Yeah.
It's not an issue for the...
Correct.
And again, we wanna keep it as small as possible, but still serve the customer.
And apparently, at the hearing that I unfortunately had to miss, there was some discussion of limiting truck traffic between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m.?
Well, I think the applicant...
Was that discussed?
Applicant was talking from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Yeah.
So...
And you were the one who had said, well, what about 7:00 to 7:00 for the trucks?
Correct, because the neighbors being like that, that was the reason.
Okay.
So...
How does it work in practice?
We have a group of landscapers that like to get to work, get their product, and get out early. That six o'clock start in the mulch season, they're little trucks, they're in and out, very, very small volume, but that six o'clock start, they can...
Starts up early in June.
Right, it does. It's a very short season.
But just remember is that you're also opening it up... you're opening it up for operation in general for that site.
Right.
Whatever time you put on it. Whether it's a shot season with the mulch, it could be...
Well, right, but again, that's where I'm thinking, you know, would you accept... do your trucks really leave that early? Do the large excavating machines and the large trucks leave?
Every now and again, every now and again, they do.
Yeah, when you're going up and do site work.
Right.
Your equipment's not gonna be there. It's gotta leave to go, whether you're working it handover or whatever.
Everybody else going up and down roof, just like us now, going up and down roof.
So what happens is they have a few-day job, though, and their mobilization is once, it's not continuous.
Right, right. I mean, once you get the equipment to the site, you leave it at the site until the work's done.
Yeah. And we limited the processing. Any other processing activities is limited till, I think, 7:30, I think.
Well, you're talking about during site cleanup?
No, entirely. Any processing, screening.
Oh, the screening part?
Yeah, any of that sort of activity is limited.
That's down to number nine.
Oh, and number... No, seven, right?
Number seven.
Oh, and nine. So the screener can only be operated between 7:30 to 4:30?
Number seven concerns the cleanup.
And number seven is cleanup?
Number nine concerns the loam screeners.
Okay. And the loam screeners would not be operated on weekends, holidays, day before a holiday, or the day after a holiday?
And that's from the schedule that Bob Gavin gave us.
Oh, is that the way the calendar worked out? It's not the day before, the day after a holiday?
You know, a lot of prevailing wage jobs, working in a public way. I ran with that schedule.
Oh, is that the way it works? I didn't know that.
Yeah, you know, right before, after a holiday.
Yeah, right.
The day before and the day after a public holiday, you are...
On a state job, you cannot work the day before, the holiday, and the day after on state highways.
To avoid that kind of traffic problem.
And... Did you do that for me, too? I think I should get that. If people are gonna pull a long weekend, it's gonna be in those times, like I think 4th of July.
If people are gonna have days off and be at their house.
Right.
4th of July week, we said nothing, you know?
I think that's very reasonable.
Well, it gives me excuse not to do it in those weeks.
Okay, so we got the times of operation down?
I think so.
Feel comfortable with that? We got the Sunday issue taken care of there? You're taking notes, good notes, right?
I am. And so I think that we... I don't know that we're gonna actually change anything right now.
No, because the business will be open on Sundays and holidays for...
Oh, yes, it's just...
...deliveries. They take place on those days only between 7:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m.
Yes, yes, okay. Well, on Sundays, it'll be closed on holidays, even to retail, right? Or no?
I guess it depends what you consider a holiday.
No.
Well, Mother's Day would be a holiday. It would probably be...
Oh, okay. Alright, no.
No.
Okay.
Memorial Day, that's a...
And I think the loam screening is restricted by holiday.
But not the retail operations?
No.
Okay. So the next thing we have is "No wood grinding, wood chipping, mulching operations or other forms of wood processing or wood waste processing shall take place on the site. No machinery that is comparable in noise or vibration emissions to wood chipping or wood grinding machinery shall be used on the site."
I think that's fine the way it is.
So just in particular, the last... I mean, the first sentence, no question, but then the second sentence, I just wanted to run that by you, that you're not... It's not just that we're restricting the mulching, but any... anything that's sort of comparable in noise, which might be hard to define, but sort of comparable to wood chipping or wood grind, which could be an excessive limitation, I don't know. Or maybe that's what we want there.
Well, are you gonna allow a stack of that?
What's a stack of?
You still have a stack of them when we're down. It's the part with the conveyor belt that allows the pile to get higher.
Like a dump into a hopper and then it just pushes it up.
It lifts it, so they can create a pyramid, basically, of soil or mulch or whatever, and get it to the heights that they need to...
Yeah, but that's an integral part of the operation.
That's a quiet machine.
That's right, but what I'm getting at is that you may wanna specify that that's an allowed use.
Yeah.
If we have this language.
Right, because you don't want it to be misinterpreted as to what you're allowing on that site.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
So maybe that last sentence is overly broad.
Yeah, that's what I was concerned about.
No machinery that's comparable...
How about taking it out?
Yeah, I think maybe we take out, but let's... But I see what Matthew's trying to do here, which is to say, you know, wood grinding, wood chipping, mulching operations, other forms of wood processing or wood waste processing.
See, here's the problem, is that you...
Take out the word, take out the words "mulching operations."
I'm thinking we take out the word "wood waste processing," like no waste processing, period.
Right.
And that might be a broader way to state it.
After...
So that...
First off, is that it's also gonna have to take into contingency, yeah, that you're gonna have to process wood to clean up that site on that site.
That's covered, that's another...
The next one now.
Then number seven specifically says it can be used during cleanup for one year.
Wood, wood, oh, wood waste. As long as it specifies wood waste, because theoretically when you're screening a loam, you're producing, you know what I mean, so... Just so somebody can...
This has to do with the grinding.
Correct, correct.
So other than loam screening...
I mean, basically, the whole operation is a wood use, in a way. Wooden loom and probably stone when you're doing, and sand, but, you know, so sometimes when you're relating to no wood use, you kinda... it can be open to interpretation as to what you're allowing and not allowing. So no grinding on the site after a certain date.
Right.
To me would be the thing. It won't be allowed on this site after a certain date. And that kind of limits, that takes that machine out of there, and you...
Yeah, but we wanna make sure there's... Okay.
You're saying, you're allowed to clean the site up with the grinder under certain conditions.
So... So no wood grinding, wood chipping, or other forms of wood processing or waste processing shall take...
Place on the site.
Site.
Full stop.
Full stop, other than a set forth in condition seven.
Other than set forth in condition seven, correct. And take out that last sentence.
Can I bring up one other thing?
If you insist.
Alright, I'm gonna insist. Because part of this, part of this is processing of trees that's gonna grow on that.
Well, but that's not gonna be wood grinding, wood chipping, or wood processing, is it?
It's wood processing.
You're considering that wood processing?
Yeah. It's wood harvesting.
That's harvesting, not processing.
Then you're gonna... Alright, then let's spell it out. There's gonna be wood harvesting allowed on that, there, so... So that it's clear, 'cause the site is gonna be...
Okay.
That way there, there's no, you know, people understand it's gonna grow trees there, he's gonna harvest them, gonna be taken off a site.
Okay. So in accordance with the forestry plan?
Right.
Okay, are we clear to go to number seven?
So when we said one year, you made a face, Dan.
Yeah, so I don't know that I can pull that off in a year. So the intent on taking on that property is as an extensive cleanup.
Yeah.
The way I justified taking on that property was to make that mess into a saleable product, right?
Yeah.
So there's lots of, you know, we can build one building, and then we start sorting through the muck and mire and all the junk, sorting, separating, just with an excavator, very little sound. Then you sort for two or three, four weeks. Put them over here, put stumps over here. Then you come in for two or three days and grind them. Then you sort again. So I don't know if there's a way we can, you know, I don't wanna take more of your time down the road, but sit back here again in a year.
Yeah, so...
Say, how far did Dan make it?
Maybe we let the initial be 18 months, was it 18 months? Like the first, and then it could be...
So I wanna get it done as fast as I can without moving product multiple times, without creating two larger piles, and we got limitations to stay within. But it's hard to say exactly sure how long.
Well, there is a provision here that allows you to come back and get it extended.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We just need some wording there that we can all get together.
Well, it says extensions may be granted at the board's discretion for a period of time not to exceed one additional year.
So that gives you two years to clean up the site. Is that enough time?
I mean, we've really kind of promised the homeowners that the site cleanup is, you know, part of, I think, where it was, was this idea that there will be a limited period of grinding, and then that'll be done.
But the thing with the process is, and it's not, I understand you guys, everybody's perspective here.
Right, we're trying to balance interest here.
I understand, yes. Completely do, understand that. It's gonna be like limited little, you know, you could sort for a month and a half, maybe even two months towards the end, and then grind for three or four days. But there's all that, you know, some stuff, there's 22 feet of material that need to be dealt with.
Okay, so let me be honest. My concern is that if there's not a deadline in here...
I need, we need the deadline.
That you're, you're normal, as nice of a guy as you are...
I understand, yeah.
Your normal inclination is gonna be, I have these other jobs to do, I'm gonna put my site work on hold because I have paid work over here, right? And then that could stretch this out. I know, and I know you have to juggle, and I know that this is normal business, right? So the question is, how do we balance those considerations?
I kinda think that you kinda have to set a date. You kinda have to say if it's gonna be 18 months or two years, because this stuff can be hauled off-site.
At some point, the grinding could take place off-site.
Correct. And so the idea, 'cause this could go on for five years.
No, I don't want that.
No, but I'm just saying is that the problem is, is that people wanna have a defined time that they know it's gonna stop, alright? And going on and saying, oh, we can come in for an extension, frankly, is this gonna bring the citizens in here complaining about what's going on? Alright, that there was no noise evaluation done on the piece of equipment, and this board has allowed it to carry on and carry on. So I think it has to come to a point where if you haven't got it done in that timeframe, it gets hauled off to Marshfield to be ground there.
Can we go with his theory and maybe the, I think is how you worded it, and what we do with that?
Attorney Norman?
Yes, I couldn't remember. I'm sorry. But you worded that well. But can we do the 12 months, and then if we need the extension for another 12 months?
You come back when we have a hearing.
Yeah, that's what's...
Come back.
That's what's, that's what's the conditions here.
That's, that's the best.
And then at that point.
I don't know how your draft reads now, but.
It's a, it's, it's, extensions may be granted at the board's discretion for a period of time not to exceed one additional year, and so.
So if he ended up at the first year and he said another six months, we'd give him six months, but it, and then came back and he said another six months, but that would be it. It's a two-year window.
But, but you know, keep in mind that at that point, everyone's gonna have more information.
Right, yeah.
Which is gonna be either better or worse for you, right?
Maybe it wasn't that much. Yeah.
Because if you've done it in a way that's respectful.
Right.
You're probably gonna have the neighbors less upset with you.
Right.
If you've done it in a way that they feel like took advantage of it.
Yeah.
They're gonna be in here saying, don't give any extensions, make them haul it off-site, and is that fair?
Would, would the extension meetings be necessarily an open meeting?
Well, all meetings are open, the question is whether or not we would.
No one would be.
Give you notice, um, and I guess the question is whether we could agree that we, you know, you, you pick a couple representatives that we notify. I mean.
I, I mean, I can't speak for anyone else on this, but personally, I, I, I agree with you that this, if, if there's, if people have it in their heads that this is gonna go out to two years or more. There's gonna be a lot of, a lot of pushback.
Right.
But if there's a hard stop, personally, I'd rather see an eighteen-month hard stop than even mess around with extensions.
Right.
I think that would be way more effective.
It'd be, it'd be fair to everybody. You'd know, you'd know.
It's longer to move on a month.
No, no, I'm just, and you know, I don't wanna penalize it.
It's a compromise between a year plus extensions and your time and your time and having to make your case.
I mean, one of the things we could do is say six, eighteen months with six-month extension rather than one-year extension.
Eighteen months.
Um, so we, we're still at two years either way, but we're not, you know.
I see both points, and I respect both of them, I just, it's a lot of stuff to move. Eighteen months, months might be better, give me two mulch seasons, so I don't have to.
Right.
I was gonna say, eighteen months gets you to the fall of two thousand nineteen.
So it's, it's getting moved, the product, the material will get moved once as opposed to moving it to Marshfield, now it's moving it four or five times.
Trust me, listen, I'm just putting, the reason I'd say that is because it gives you incentive to get it ground up.
Yeah.
Uh, the problem with, the problem with allowing extensions is it gives people false sense of security that, I'll get the extension and I'll be able to finish this up.
Yeah.
And therefore, I'm gonna go take care of this, but the problem is, is that these people have to get their lives.
I understand, yeah.
Set in the noise level, so I mean, we're not asking you to do, uh, remediation, uh, uh, sound.
Yep.
So.
So step it up and get it done.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, um.
So Becky, you're, you're noting the changes in verbia trend.
I am.
Okay, just to make sure.
Okay, um. Section eight.
I could actually open the Word document and type it in if you prefer, I'd love to, yeah.
No, that's okay.
I think that's fine.
Okay, I, I just asked, which, which, what, what direction are we going with that, the hard stop or the extension?
It's turning on, yeah? I thought we were going with the eighteen months with the six-month extension.
With the six-month extension, so it's a two-year window.
It all seems reasonable.
And there's a hard stop after two years.
Yeah, okay, um, and then, um.
Fire code requirements.
Yeah, that, that.
I think it's fine, right?
Yeah.
Just to emphasize the fire code issues, um. Sure.
I think that's appropriate, number nine.
I think it is, and then number ten, any comments on number ten? So, um, I guess we should be reading these because I take it that no one in the public has them, so. We have condition number one, all work is done in accordance with the plans.
Oh, Becky, I've got one or two more, I have to say, we're going.
If you wanna hand them out. Number two, all signage complies with all applicable provisions of the bylaws and regs. Number three, all vegetation reasonably watered and maintained until established, and if vegetation dies off, petitioner shall plant replacements for the vegetation. Provide for water hours of operation. And number five, we've already discussed, number six, no wood grinding, wood chipping, um, or other forms of wood processing or waste processing other than a set forth in condition seven. Uh, wood harvesting operations will be permitted in accordance with the forestry plan. Uh, wood chipping, wood grinding may be used during cleanup for a period not to exceed eighteen months. Extensions may be granted for a period of time not to exceed six months, um, in total.
Um.
Um.
Cut, number six there, do you reword that one more or?
Yes, we did, yeah, we did.
We did.
We did.
We're gonna take out the last sentence on the noise or vibration emissions, because it seems too hard to know what that might mean. Um, number.
Eight.
Eight is, uh, fire code requirements, nine is loam screeners, topsoil screeners and comparable machines. Restricted one loam screener and may only take place on weekdays between seven-thirty and four-thirty. Operation of the vehicles and, vehicles and equipment of the applicant when using a backup alarm. Shall be equipped with a smart white noise backup alarm, using that instead of a normal backup alarm while on the site. Vehicles and equipment of Smith and Sons and other businesses operating at the site, we're gonna say, um. While the site plan approval is in effect, shall not use Pleasant Street, route of movement to or from the site. Um, the applicant shall make all reasonable efforts to use hydraulic tree shears rather than chainsaws when harvesting trees on the site, where that, that was brought up at the last meeting.
Yep.
Okay. Mulch piles at the site shall not exceed thirty feet in height, sixty feet in width, and two hundred feet in length. Uh, bury a wall at least four feet high to define the pile's perimeter and prevent creeping. Located is to allow access by firefighting apparatus on all four sides, and a minimum of twenty feet will be maintained between any mulch pile and any other yard equipment, vehicles, or stock. Mulch piles will be monitored for temperature routinely.
Yeah, and those came from the fire chief's letter.
Okay, and my only question on this is, um, is he gonna need a ZVA approval for outdoor storage?
Display of goods?
Yes.
I think the way that was approached was via the, the selling product that has something to do with the, well, forestry agricultural side. That was, that was, 'cause it started off down a different road, that was.
Um.
The, the initial approach. But I think until you actually have agricultural appro, I don't think that would apply until you actually have the chapter six law approval.
Um.
See, this thing kinda morphed on its way down, so. I think you probably don't need to go to ZVA.
Well, we should, we should, um, that's, that's kind of a question for your attorney, because we, you know, any approval we give is gonna be subject to. The bylaws, and if the bylaws require ZVA to give a special permit, then you're gonna also have to go do that. Um, protection will be provided for any heat source. Items that are not buried or coated with material. Um, I take it that came from the, there are various sites at, at the site class A fire extinguishers. And the number of extinguishers shall be determined by the authority having jurisdiction and final inspection, but ta, taken in this case will be the fire department. Unless that changes in the meantime. The water supply will be in court, in accordance with the National Fire Protection Association codes. Um, petitioner shall carry out soil testing as specified by peer review engineer at locations to be determined by the board's peer review engineer prior to cleanup of the site. Which brings me to the question, the engineering review balance might fall below zero soon. So we'll need that to be replenished.
Yeah, we'll take care of that.
Okay.
Probably tomorrow on the hill.
Okay.
Hope that's already done, I'm sorry.
Um. Okay.
And I'm sorry for that, do you want it to, to go back up to the, the six, seven dollar level that, I know you had mentioned in the past, wanted that to be the policy, or do you just want it to be enough to keep it up for now, so to speak?
Didn't bond, probably bringing three, was that what we last decided?
I think that's correct, yeah.
Are we okay with three being in the account for now, or?
That would bring it up to about five.
As it gets depleted, it can be replenished, so three will be fine.
Yeah.
Okay, um, but keep in mind that there will be peer review along the way, so this will get, this, during the site cleanup, there will be peer review, so that'll keep going. Um, let's try to finish this up if we can, um, petitioner shall apply for a curb cut permit for the entrance from Washington Street from DOT. Is that gonna be required for sure?
I think you just wanna, i- i- in our existence, probably grandfathered, but you probably wanna make sure.
So do we wanna say that they have to apply for a curb cut permit or only if required?
I think if required.
If required.
The one that's there should be, the original should, has always been there.
Yeah.
I don't think they, I think it's just basically the state's gonna go down and say, yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's only if required. Petitioners thus submit an ASBOP plan with a written statement approved by the board that all the conditions in this vote have been complied with before an occupancy permit shall be issued. The ASBOP plan will be submitted in hard copy in digital form. Um, all site work must comply with existing regulatory town bylaws as to times work may commence and end and to days of week when site work can be conducted. All outstanding comments in the Merrill engineers' letters shall be satisfactorily addressed. With reference to the waivers, the board grants the following waivers. To eliminate the requirement of curving at edges of all paved surfaces, to eliminate the requirement of a three-foot wide planted strip along the foundation. To eliminate the requirement of parking space trees. To eliminate the requirement of vertical granite curbs, and to eliminate the requirement that curbing be placed at the edges of all paved surfaces. Um, so we, like, as we said at the beginning, this was a chance for us to sort of start to go through and clean up the conditions before the. Final board vote, since we don't have a quorum who can vote tonight, we are gonna have to put it on the next agenda, do we have time? Two weeks from now?
That's what I would suggest, yeah, um, for March twelfth.
March twelfth?
Yeah.
I think there's something that, that we may, may need, that I didn't hear it yet, is that during this, um. And I know he keeps a clean site, but the problem is, is that during all this, um, work that's gonna happen on that site, you know, and a lot of trucks going in and out of a mud hole. All right, that is gonna end up, basically, it could come out onto the main road.
Mm-hmm.
And there should be some type of.
Excuse me, Paul, isn't there a, a truck trucking?
There's asphalt all the way in to pass that tree.
I understand that, but you're gonna end up with an extremely amount, if you're working in, removing all of that. Um, something that's gonna keep the mud from being on the main drag coming out of the, that's like, um.
So what are you proposing, Paul?
Work for me, I always blow my stuff.
What's that?
So what are you proposing?
I think there should be a gravel area or something that, you know what I mean?
Fifty by twenty area before the paving where the, where they can clean the wheels out, just cross them, that's all.
You know, and so we're pulling out of there and try to reduce it, because it's gonna be a situation where, uh, trucks will be pulling in, trucks will be going out, and people will be.
Is this just during site construction, or?
Well, I think, I think it's something you may wanna, you may wanna look at before the, when the, when the site's finished.
Well, I think when the site is finished, it's gonna be, it's, you shouldn't have a problem, because all of the area's gonna be paved.
But we don't have to tell them how to do it, just that.
Right, but you need, you wanna make sure that.
Oh, a reasonable, reasonable effort will be made.
Correct.
To.
Minimize.
Minimize the amount of debris.
Material that comes out onto the main road.
Right.
Okay, so we'll, um, clean up these conditions before the next meeting, we'll have, we'll set you for what time on that night, do we know?
Um, it could be for seven o'clock, so that'll be March twelfth.
So, and seven o'clock on March twelfth, we're hoping to have a quorum so that we can vote the conditions. Um, the abutters who are here tonight, was there anything else you wanted us to consider in terms of the conditions?
I know, thank you.
Just like you're asking, do you, what do you think about the conditions?
Me?
Yeah, uh, and do you have any concerns?
No, I'm, I'm relieved that there's, that there's gonna be a time limit on the grinding. Um, I think that the language that was debated about broadening, um, grinding operations to def, to be more defined as something that's equivalent. Noise or vibration, if there could be, I understand that might be a little broad, but, um, there could be something like that put back in. It's kind of in the middle, not too broad, but, but also goes to that, uh, concern that.
That there be something similar.
I mean, I don't think Mr. Smith seems like this kinda guy that's gonna be cute about it and say, well, that's not a grinder, that's something else.
Right.
That's making all that noise, I don't expect that to happen, but just in terms of tightening up the language, it could be something in the middle there.
All right, well, we'll take a look at that, I'll, I'll try to noodle on it between now and the next meeting when we.
But, no, I think, this is the first I'm seeing them, but to me, I don't have a lot of other concerns.
I mean, I, I do hope that through this process, we've tried to come to a solution that might work for the abutters and for the, the, um, business to establish itself, so. Let's hope that we found a middle ground that works.
That's good, huh?
Thank you guys for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um.
So just to clarify, um, you're, we also, I've also got the board meeting on March nineteenth, uh, so that'll be two months in a row, I think.
Oh, why are we doing two months in a row?
I mean, it wasn't, the original intention was just to meet, not to meet in the first, not in March, um, so originally I'd like to have a, like, and just the nineteenth was like the public hearing and another public hearing continued, um.
Oh, so we already have those public hearings set on the nineteenth?
Yeah, so the nineteenth is ready, those are, we got two that are ready to set, so I think, I don't think we can avoid, uh, two months in a row.
Why aren't we meeting?
We're looking.
Okay.
Unless you wanna meet.
What are the public hearings for, where is it?
The one is the continuation of two thirty Water Street.
Yeah.
And the other one is, uh, the New Dominic Drive stuff, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
That'll be the first one, yeah.
So where is it?
So I see we have Mr. McGill here for two twenty Center Street?
The garage.
I was summoned, so I arrived.
But I don't remember why.
So this was, me and this was some of the board members, I don't remember, but back in either November, December, I think. So the discussion came up and some of the board members said, well, I said, ask Tom to go to come back and, uh, uh, and talk with us, and I have two twenty Center Street, it's progressing.
But I'm trying to remember why specifically there was a concern about how it was progressing, do you recall?
It's getting me like that.
Was it, this was a Brian concern?
Were there concerns?
Yeah, or was it just an update?
There's probably none of you, because Brian stopped me in the parking lot and said he loved the building and shook my hand and thanked me.
Okay.
At least I was, might have been an actor.
No, 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 no.
Sounds like an actor.
I'm not, yeah, so.
Sounds a little out of character, but okay.
I know, what have you done with Brian, uh, so, but, uh, that's, uh.
But I'm trying to remember why.
Well, let's get, well, let's get an update.
Yeah, so why don't you just tell us what's going on?
Uh, well, we're down to the last four found eight, well, three as of tomorrow, so we'll put in the last, uh, the fourth, the, the, I don't know, after this next foundation tomorrow, we'll have three more to go. Hopefully have them up before the, or those in the ground before the summer, and, um, I'd love to be out of there by August.
You mean fully built?
Yeah.
Finished work and everything?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to be, that's, yeah.
Really?
Occupied.
Well, we've got, well, we're hopefully, I mean, we're ready to occupy, we've, we've sold four, so we've ready to occupy, I mean, two are just, um, we're just, they're ready to go, we're just. Waiting for the site poles to get here and, and, uh, but they're, you know, they're essentially all done, and the other, um, one, two, two are. Two are ready for sheet rock, the commercial building's pretty much, that, that's all sheet rocked. The other two are all sheet rocked, just doing some finished taping insides, there's four, which will be ready in a couple of weeks, and then, uh. Then I have, um, three framed, um, so they'll be the next month or two.
Do you already have the roads in there and everything?
Yeah, it's up to the board.
I haven't started driving to the property.
Yeah.
Well, you have the gates up, don't you, don't you?
Yeah, yeah, we have the gates up, yeah, yeah, so the top, the, the road's in, um, the road's in, the well's in, the, um, the irrigation's not in yet, it's the ground. Uh, was frozen solid for, and we're, obviously, it's a little too early, we'll do that in hopefully Aprils.
And was septic put in before it froze?
Oh, yeah, 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 septic is all in, that's all been done, inspected, that is a hundred percent done, um, the drainage is.
Don't go to video.
At least it's not like Britney Spears, then I would have some questions.
Good taste, good taste.
The, uh, the drainage is, we got a, a portion of the drainage in before the ground froze, but then, you know, December, we had that, it was either. Below zero or, you know, raining or snowing for a month and a half, so everything, we had thirty inches of frost, there wasn't a whole lot we were able to do, so.
We just, but now it's been.
Now it's, yes, and now we made a push this, the past two weeks, we, um, we've gotten another, the drainage basins in, so. There are, I think, over four hundred on, about three hundred and eighty on site, so we've gotten maybe a third of them, so the next. But everything else is out of the way, that's gotta go in the ground, so we're really just gonna focus on those over the next, um, couple of weeks, and hopefully finish that up, and then. Everything else is already, the gas is already live, the houses are live, the electric's there, um, the sewer's all in the, I mean, the septic's all in the road, I mean, the drainage is all in the road already, it's just the basins.
Have we had peer review out there?
Yeah, he, oh, peer, as far as Merrill.
He was behind you now, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, he's, I can feel him, I can feel his.
Phil is, Phil is Bill.
Yeah, he's been out there, uh, what, twice, two or three times now?
Uh, actually four, I was out there three on the first two systems, and then, uh, actually twice on the, while the roof recharge area.
Yeah, yeah.
So how are we doing, Peter, is there anything else we should be asking about or thinking about?
No, I mean, I, I didn't hear the whole, um, presentation, but, um, they're moving along with the subsurface infiltration for, uh, both the roadway and the individual units, so. Um, basically, that was our responsibility.
Okay.
So, I mean, they're keeping, the contract has been very good, the site guy, as far as keeping us in the loop, so.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so we put up a, trying to leave stuff open and consolidate so we can get, you know, so we're not making fifty trips, at least try to get a couple and then backfill and.
And when does your landscaping go in?
That will probably, I mean, depending on weather, I mean, if we get a snowstorm in, in March, but, um, I'd like to have it in an April, start putting it in, but I'll leave that up to the landscaper when they.
Yeah.
When they think it's, it's a good time, um.
I wasn't asking that in terms of jurisdiction, I was just thinking that some of the townsfolk would feel like.
Well, it's part of it, though.
Well, some of the, the people in town who've sort of been very upset about the.
The tree loss.
The tree cutting and all of this, that, you know, when they start to see the landscape and see it come together and how beautiful it's gonna be, it makes it a little easier to stomach.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, ceiling's taking a little heat off of me on the faucet connect with clear cutting a lot, so now it's, I'm a little, you know, sort of moved on from me.
But when yours is landscaped, I think it'll take the heat in general off.
Yeah. Yeah, for sure, for sure, yeah, and believe me, I wanna get it to that point too, because I, you know, I mean, they've been great, they've been selling, and I haven't advertised yet, but. I think once the, you know, the landscaping gets in and, and stuff like that, it'll, you know, could really make a big push and hopefully be out of there.
Right.
Quickly, so, um, and, uh, other than that, we haven't had any, probably have security cameras up, we've had one or two thefts, but other than that.
Nothing much.
Nothing, you know.
I will say that the, the building in the front, I think, does. I will say that the, the building in the front, I think, does.
Looks great.
Good.
Yeah.
I mean, it really adds to the, that look of, uh, a historical type look along the roadway there.
Thanks. Yeah, it came out, it came out real nice, I've got a lot of compliments on that and, uh.
See now if you had two of those, what would you, you'd get, right?
Fortunately, I'd be broken by two of those, barely afford one of them, um, the brick alone.
Have you gotten any interest in people going into that space? I mean, just in terms of our thinking?
I haven't even, I haven't even marketed it because I've been using it as storage.
Okay.
Um, right now we have, I put, that's, we're trying to get rid of the trailer, cause I'm, you know, in the next couple, you know, month or so, I'd like to have people in there. So I'm trying to get rid of the trailer, so right now that's our, now that that's locked, we have power and gas and heat in there, that, that's now kind of turned into.
Maybe a, be a real estate office for a little bit, huh?
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
It looks like there are a few businesses at the corner of Scoos, uh, one thirty nine fifty three that may have to leave pretty soon, so I'd like to.
Yeah, that gas station under there clearing all that, yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
What are you talking about? Oh.
It hasn't gone through here though, yet, totally.
No, it hasn't, Irving Oil?
Right.
But the, um, I've already heard people saying, I can't believe they're taking away the coffee shop.
I have a spot for it if you let me put in food, I'd love to put in a coffee shop.
I think we, we've been less opposed to the idea of food in there than the, uh, ZBA has.
Right. Well, yeah, remember you're gonna be competing with Sealan, cause he's gonna want an occupancy stove.
I, I'd love to put in a coffee shop though, but mine's set up where I have that porch that runs all on the back.
See, you gotta advertise.
I, and maybe I'll go to ZBA, go back to them, see if they can get a coffee shop in there.
It's a ZBA decision on coffee shop?
Yeah, cause we don't allow, we don't allow restaurants.
No, but I thought there was some, no, there was actually.
No drive up.
I know, no drive through, but there was a, if you do something.
Gracie has the pot on fire, come on in.
I think it'll be, I mean, it's the same check, so it's under the plan, so I think, I think restaurants, if they're not drive through, I think they're allowed, I'm not sure.
Yeah, the special permit, yeah, actually, restaurants, um, that aren't drive through.
Yeah, so you'd have to go to.
Well, does he, they send a restaurant to the ZBA?
No, no, we, that, when they gave the special, when they gave the variances, I think they said you couldn't have a restaurant as part of the variances.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
But under our special permit granting authority, we're supposed to be able to allow a restaurant.
Where the special permit is.
Yeah, because it's allowed, it's allowed incentive protection.
As a special permitting. With the special permit.
With the special permit, as long as.
Given by us, so that's where we're.
Then we have the chicken and egg, we revisit the chicken and the egg again, don't.
Not once it's built.
Maybe we wait a little while then.
Yeah, yeah, wait till I get, get it finished and all. But, uh, yeah, so everything's, everything's going well there, I haven't. There've been no, I haven't heard any complaints, once I had to have the guys turn down the radio, but we haven't turned it off, but other than that, uh, seems to be, no, I haven't had, at least I haven't heard of any, too many complaints or any, so.
And nothing's coming to this board, right, Matthew?
I don't think so, no.
I mean, just the, the things I've seen on social media about the clear cutting.
No, that's next door.
But that was generated, but then they were saying.
I'm just gonna put a big sign in front with a finger pointing down the road, so you'll just, or you had them.
But some people were upset that between the two projects.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what happens.
But.
There's so much that goes, I couldn't, I had a big rock and I said to him, I say, I was like, well, let's bury it somewhere, he goes, where, we have, there's, you know, it's, it's three and, three plus acres, but I don't have anywhere to put anything.
You haven't got enough. You're getting a run for the rock.
I have no room for a rock.
Put it all flat, put the number on it.
Oh, you got enough rocks, I could build a, a little one, I guess, um, but, we'll find out, we have to, so.
All right, so we actually have something else coming up, it, it appears that, that there's nothing else that we needed to find out about, so thank you for coming in and just giving us a little update.
All right. All right. Thanks.
All right, thanks.
Feel free to come by anytime too, if you wanna take a look, walk through there.
An easier meeting you've ever had, right?
Sure. I'm the cheapest too, no attorneys, no nothing. All right, thank you guys.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matthew.
Thanks, Matthew.
Okay, so our next discussion up on the calendar is a discussion relating to parkage, draining and septic at the Wolf's Town Fieldhouse at three forty Oak Street, possible decision regarding, um, whether to extend temporary permission to use the additional parking area. I had previously, um, recused myself because my son was, was playing ball there, he's not involved in ball there at this point and my fellow board members feel that, um, there's no.
Conflict.
Conflict, because I don't have a financial interest unless my son makes it to the NBA. Point to this.
And the odds are?
The odds are, I'm.
They're good, they're good.
They're good, I'm actually glad to see this.
I didn't know he was a bowler. I didn't know he was a bowler. Well, his parents are great athletes, so.
So anyway, um, and plus we only have four people here tonight, so it's convenient. Um, so where are we on this? I've, I've sort of lost track a little bit.
There's a letter from RK here.
RK?
And are we, are we, are we looking at extending the temporary permit, is that what's before us?
Do you guys wanna maybe just start by updating us on where we are?
Um, John, go ahead, John. Well, as far as the, um, the septic, the septic, um, do, um, is under, not underway, but it's been permitted. The repair plan has an approval from the Board of Health, uh, John has engaged the services and has a signed contract with the contractor. And based on what he just told me before the meeting, um, they're hoping to break ground in about a week to ten days on that. Um, as far as the septic, I mean, the site plan design, uh, we had, um, proceeded shortly after our last meeting with the board regarding this subject. And then we had to put the plan on hold for a little bit, we were making some additional information from the property owner as well as from, uh, from John. The project's back on track and we anticipate submitting at around the end of the month. Um, I don't know where the best place to put this up is. Just as far as the, um, the layout, this layout is very similar to what we had shown the board previously, however, we did have to change some of the parking in the front due to the location of the septic system, which is actually right in this area. There's quite a bit of grading associated with the system because of the high groundwater and extremely poor soils. Um, we had done quite a bit of soil testing over in this area, to no avail, um, the soil was just awful, it was all, it was like a clay, it was like pottery clay. So, um, again, consequently, this is where the system was approved, it's gonna be a pump system, the tankage is here, pump chamber will be here. And the leaching system kinda comes in this general area. Uh, this layout, um, we determined we needed about a hundred and fifty-eight spaces. With this layout, we have a hundred and sixty-six spaces. We're basically coming in to a main drive with no, no parking directly off of the drive so that there won't be any queuing issues, and then the parking is in the front for most of the day-to-day operations and then for any, uh, tournaments and so on, we'll be utilizing this parking in this area. We have two exits, uh, right and left turn only, try to expedite people getting out onto Oak Street.
Is there any, is that, is the building being expanded or is that the current size of the building?
No, the existing building.
Okay.
Um, we're not changing the building whatsoever. Um, as far as the grading, uh, we have, the reason we haven't submitted the plan yet is we're having somewhat of a challenge with the drainage. Um, currently now the building, this part of the roof and this part of the roof drains, uh, basically comes off the roof and hits the ground. It's channeled over to here, there's a catch basin here which flows down into this area. And all of the existing pavement now just goes out onto Oak Street. It either went out onto Oak Street or down, uh, a swale towards the front of the site. Uh, we really can't tell, um, the area was disturbed by the time we went out and did the survey, I think it's the board members. But based on the USGS maps, um, previous, uh, plans that we have in the office, back actually when it was a tennis courts, a tennis club, that was the direction of flow. And then the rest of the drainage would come down to this area and into a drainage swale which flowed down here. And then there's a ten inch pipe which heads down in this direction. Um, and that's what the holdup is, so it's, it's kind of a challenge to, to meet the requirements for DEP stormwater management recharge and attenuation of flows, particularly with the soils being so poor.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and as far as the grading, this is, um, the grading as it stands to date. Um, most of the runoff will come down into this area, again, here's the septic system, it'll come down here. What I'm looking at now is pulling most of the drainage from the roof in this part of the parking lot down into here and creating a stormwater basin along the existing drainage ditch. The front portion will flow down into this direction, this paved area will flow overland into these two stormwater basins and then discharge into an existing swale which discharges down onto this property. Um, I don't think we'll be, have a problem, uh, meeting the existing, you know, the pre-existing condition because there were tennis courts there and this, the pavement's about the same, the tennis courts were here. Um, we're not gonna, we're gonna assume that it was all grass, no, no tennis courts, that'll be kind of worst case scenario as far as the stormwater. Um, and that's about where we are.
The, the, the pipe that comes down on the left side, is that gonna go into the stop and, on the, the other side?
Down here?
My left?
Yes.
Um, is that, um, is that going onto the Stop and Shop property?
It'll go onto the Stop and Shop property if flow less than currently exists.
Okay.
As I said before, I, I, I don't know whether it came all the way onto Oak Street, um, as I said, it's difficult tracking down the stormwater system. It's actually a state system on Oak Street which comes down and it empties into these, a stormwater basin right behind the, uh, gas station.
Right.
Which handles the, um, the interchange and a good portion of Oak Street.
Okay.
Now, we can't, we can't tie into that, the state won't let you do that, so. Um, I do think before it either flowed overland and onto Oak Street or, um, these, um, rip ramp swale areas, they lead me to believe it did go overland, come down that side slope. I, um, we don't have any pre, um, predisturbance surveys, so I can't tell for sure. Uh, but I don't know where else it would've gone. There is a drainage divide, um, in the lower part of the property, it's right about here. This, there's a swale here along the edge of the, uh, Stop and Shop property and then it kinda comes into our property. There's a high point which, again, maybe here actually, and this flows down around beside the parking lot and then behind the parking lot. Then it goes by Murphy's property and then out into that massive detention basin that's associated with Stop and Shop. And I think a portion of it comes here, there's a flayed end section here which I think takes it into the closed system for the Stop and Shop, but I don't know for sure. So, that's the, that's the remainder of the design, is really to figure out, um, how to attenuate the flows. I don't think the front's gonna be a problem, um, the back, it's a matter of size in the detention basin and, um, and also trying to keep, um, any adverse impacts on the Stop and Shop. I mean, that's obviously a, um, a consideration and a concern of, of the, um, of RK Centers, so, um, we wanna be mindful of that.
Looks like it's a, it's a big film job, uh, Peter.
Um, not too bad, the, this, all of this, well, this area here, Tom, is really associated with the septic. So whether, whether this, whether this area is developed or not, this, this is gonna be earthwork right here, this, see how it flattens out here adjacent to the parking? That's why, it's because the, the system lays like this.
Okay.
And it's a pretty good sized system.
I don't think we have to be.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Just it, it looks like you got, you got quite a slope between the two parking areas.
Yeah.
Between the road, it looks like it's a four or five foot drop.
It does, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Is that true now?
No, this, this area doesn't exist.
No.
This area here is all pavement as it, as it stands now, um, there's a grass area here, this opens up, there's pavement here and then there's a loading dock as you come in and block down.
Oh, okay, so that.
That's right in there, that's gonna be filled, so it's level with, this'll all be at the same level into here.
Okay, and then there's gonna be a lower parking level?
This is actually higher.
Oh, it's higher?
Yeah, because to get over the septic system, right.
Oh, okay.
Okay, there's some, did you see the letter?
Yeah, so we, so we have a letter here from RK Centers asking us basically to, um, cancel the temporary approval, um, until the, um, until the full site plan is remediated, um.
But do we need to do that? Because when are you gonna start work?
On this, on the, on the site? Uh, well, we have to come to the board and, you know, we have the, the handling process and so on, so. Um, as I said, we, the, the, the goal is to submit by the end of the month, probably got two weeks worth of work, I'm away for a week unfortunately, but, um, so that takes us just about to the end of the month and then there's the handling process, so, however long that takes.
So the work, um, they're gonna come in and do site work for the Board of Health, for the septic plan, and then they're gonna have to come in and do, so they're not gonna end up with their equipment sort of there all at once to do.
We're hoping to kinda time it that way, so that kinda keeps the cost down. Cause I've been sending him, or Peter's been sending me, so he kinda knows where.
What the ultimate goal is in terms of something, um, grading.
Yeah.
So that some of the site work can be done all at the same time.
And you guys saw the letter, so you're, no?
Uh, I didn't see, I'm not sure, actually.
It was an email.
Yeah, it's sent to you.
Yeah. I mean, I have, I can print that more.
When was that date, Andy?
January tenth.
I probably did. I haven't seen anything relevant.
Madam Chair.
Yeah?
I wrote the letter, I'm Dave Baker from RK Centers.
Hi, Mr. Baker.
Our position is, we wanna, we, we saw that the, there's two different projects here, one is the septic system, which we knew was going through the Board of Health and got approval, which is great. Cause we had a failed septic system that was overflowing onto our property.
Yeah.
And the second is stormwater drainage, and what we're maintaining is that the area that was cleared to make the expansion should've gone through full site plan review and stormwater should've been addressed, and it wasn't. And so we're saying, cause we saw no action all winter, I kept checking with Matthew, have, have stormwater plans been submitted?
Yeah.
And was told no, told no, told no.
Right.
And we said, we're willing to cooperate as good neighbors provided we see forward progress. I'm very happy to hear that Merrill's now been re-engaged and that plans are forthcoming, but our hook with you guys is that until a full set of plans comes to you, until it's peer reviewed, till you can have your hearings and, and look at the mitigation and, and the pre-construction, post-construction flows, um, you know, that they, that extended permit and with all due respect to the operator, cause I know he's trying to run a business, but with all due respect, I have to insist that you don't extend his operational parking permit unless this gets teed up through the process and, you know, there's an opportunity to peer review it and for us to look at it with our experts, and I'm sorry that, that they wasted the entire winter and that they're only bringing plans in now. But the reality is, we were here, I think, last summer before this board saying, you know, we got a problem, the water, you know, they cleared the trees, the, the, they filled it with, uh, recycled asphalt made of basically an impervious surface. And all that flow and all the snow storage is coming onto us and Oak Street. And how long do I wait before I, you know, stop being a good neighbor and, and say, come on? So I have to come back to this board and say, that temporary permit and that expansion parking lot and the scope of work that was done, I don't think I would've been allowed to do that in, in almost any town I operate in, so I'm scratching my head. Understand that he has a parking problem, he has a business and that you guys were being nice, but now we have to get Merrill full speed ahead and get a submission to you and get the process, the peer review process done and the planning board process done and see what comes out the other end. And hopefully that can get done before your, your deadline, which I think probably not at this point, you know, it's coming up pretty fast. And that's why I wrote the email to Matthew, I called Matthew every month and said, Matthew, have they submitted plan check? And I did send him emails and I did ask him to share those emails with the board. And, you know, I still have to, I know that they, I, I don't, I wanna look into some things that I, you know, based on Peter's conversation. Complete trust in Merrill and for the record, I use Merrill, I just had them do a Dunkin' Donuts pad for me in Kingston, so I, they're a very great company and full confidence when the final package comes out, it'll be a quality product, but it's not out yet. And that's what I'm here before this board saying, we have to turn up the heat to make sure the applicant submits his plans and goes through the proper procedure to have the work product, you know, reviewed. And hopefully all this, I'm sure the design will work at the, in the end of the day, but, you know, I think we've been more than patient and the water, because of the way they clear the parking with all the snow, they just pile it up right at the top of the hill on the property line, it's still coming down onto us. Um, I have offered to Merrill, I have all CAD files of all those drainage basins and all those pipes and all the mass highway easements with us cause I own all that property, or my company does, and I've offered to share it, to make their design. you know, that's thousands of dollars' worth of engineering in CAD, you know, that I'm willing to give them to make their project go faster. Nobody's asked me for it.
I wasn't aware that offer was on the table, David.
I said it the last time I was here, Peter. You know, first time, first time I met you, I said, I'm trying to be a good neighbor, I just, and I want this guy to have a successful business. You see, we have a basketball logo, so we're pro basketball and sports and things like that, so I'm, I'm trying not to put a guy out of business. But it's been months, and, and Merrill didn't get the green light to do the stormwater design.
Well, it was a situation on my end there, I mean, there was a delay of about a month and a half, where I just had to see if I could afford the septic. And the septic was just outrageous cost, and it was just like, can I afford to do it? And I talked to probably thirty different contractors, and they have one contractor that is letting me finance a portion of it. But on that, to be able to, to do, finish the septic, I need that parking, or else I can't pay them. That was the issue was there.
I hear you, but at the same time, I have an issue downstream, a butter issue, and those, those outlets that are showing, I'm not sure, you know, if you can design it so there's no more flow going there, pre-construction, pre-clearing, then post, I'll sit here and smile and tell the board I'm happy as can be. But I have to see the design, and the design hasn't been done, and I know you're trying to afford the septic, but that engineering for the stormwater and the parking lot could've been going on this whole time, and it didn't.
Right, well, I just, I had to pay Merrill for the septic design, and it was like, am I paying to do, finish this design if I couldn't afford to do the septic, so I was kind of like, ah, can I just hold off a second? Figure out if I can afford to pay that, so we finished paying him off for the septic design, and he's doing this design here. I mean, I don't know how quickly we can get this done, but it's kind of like, I'm in a catch-22.
But where's the property owner?
Sorry?
Where, where, what's the property owner's role in this? I mean, there's some responsibility on part of the person who owns this piece of land.
Essentially, it's a land lease right now that I have with them. Essentially, I'm responsible for everything that's going on there, the building, the property and everything. So, I mean, he's been gracious, so I could pay Peter off, he's like, hey, don't pay me this month the rent. Get this done, so that you can get this done, so that the site work is done. So, I'm still collecting from the fall, as you're aware of the issues there. The people that always say, oh, we're not paying you, cause we had to use the porta-potties, we had to use this, and like, you played the whole season, you know. And you just, so I'm in a catch-22, and now it's our busy season, is the spring.
So, so you're doing a lot of improvements to this owner's property? That if you walk away, he's gonna have all of these improvements.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, this is everything, yeah, quite a lease.
That's quite a lease. Yeah, 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 no, I, I just, I mean, that's, that's a good deal for the landowner.
Well, but ultimately, the owner is the owner, and just like the water department, you, you lean the owner, you don't lean the tenant. You know, so if you guys have an issue, I think you can bring the owner, and I understand he's got a great lease with him, but again, I'll leave this meeting tonight, and I'll check in with Matthew, and I'd like to see these plans and hear that they got submitted, and that's progress. And if that happens, great.
So what, what is the deadline right now, to so I understand?
I think March ninth.
March ninth is the deadline?
Yeah, for the.
Temporary permit?
For the board's, yeah, one-year sort of temporary permission and approval of the expanded parking area.
Thirty days for the submission?
Yeah, I mean, it's, and I appreciate your offer, Dave, I misunderstood, I didn't realize you actually had the drainage as well. It's just, there's a lot of moving wheels. I hate to say two weeks, I hate to say it'll be in by the ninth, and then, you know, something happens and I'm a few, three or four days behind the eight ball, and as of next week, I'm on vacation for a week. And I'm sure John doesn't want to hear that, but it.
There's just somebody else in the office that can do it, so that we.
Yeah, well, it's not very efficient when the guy who's been responsible for most of it leaves, you know, so.
And I'm not sure that, that it's gonna produce a better product.
No, I, I wanna see Peter stay on it, I wanna see a comprehensive set of plans and stormwater calculations, and I'm gonna wanna have them independently reviewed. I'm happy if you guys.
Frankly, I'd, I'd like to grant an extension.
For one month?
That's reasonable, but I just want you guys to hear from me.
To get the, to get the, the plans drawn and submitted, so they can be reviewed, so that.
Yeah, at this point with the calendar, there's no other way.
Well, I'm thinking.
Cause it doesn't, it's not gonna help, no matter, I mean, by, by stopping.
What are we gonna say, Tom?
My question is, the septic's been approved. When, when do you anticipate starting doing the septic?
They had their tree, tree guy out there last week, mapping out, and he's gonna start, I believe, within the next couple of weeks. Because I told him my tournament season starts that last weekend in March, we have the fishing and rod.
When your septic system isn't gonna be built until probably the end of April.
Uh, he said for three weeks until we have an operational septic system approved by the Board of Health from when he starts. And then he just said the, the grading and the soil and the grass and all that would be after.
That's not the septic system, that's, in addition to, the septic system is all the grading that goes around. You're probably looking at, wouldn't be, you're probably looking at a month before you get plans to us.
I was actually meaning.
We'll have them submitted by the end of, the end of March.
So, Tom, I was just saying that we give a month for them to get the plans and the application in. And then if they get the plans and application in within a month, then we would consider.
Let's revisit it.
And it, then we would consider an extension to give us time for the review process, and we would take a look at, we would revisit it in a month.
That sounds fair.
Does that seem fair?
You okay with that?
You could get it done in a month?
Yeah, I think that's extremely fair.
You could get the site plan application in a month. You know that we have a short leash here.
I'll be here, I just wanna keep it on a short leash, so we see forward progress, and we get to the promised land.
Okay, all right, so, does that work for everyone? Okay, you wanna make a motion?
Well, the motion I was gonna make was to wait thirty days until we consider a extension of the Mar- of the March ninth date. In other words, wait until we get submittal within thirty days before we make a decision to extend it.
But then it expires.
We have to give an extension.
Oh, that's right, expires.
We have to give an extension of thirty days from March ninth.
All right, so I'll, I'll make a motion that we make an extension of thirty days for the, to April ninth?
For the use, for the use of the site.
So it'll be April ninth?
To April ninth?
Yep.
And we expect, you know, and then will we visit it on that date if we have the submission in?
If we have the submission, yeah.
And subject to thirty-day extension to give the applicant time to submit a stormwater package for the board's review.
Well, the only way will we consider extending beyond April nine is if we have received the application. The full application with the engineered plans for the stormwater management at the site.
Basically, the site plan application.
Site plan application with the engineered plans.
So are we clear on the motion?
So, you wanna restate the motion?
Yeah, so I make a motion that we extend until April ninth, the deadline for submission of the plan, and an extension until April ninth of the temporary permit, correct?
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, sounds like we have a plan going forward, we have, you have time to get it done and go on vacation.
Yeah, we'll definitely go on vacation.
You have a deadline, it's a short leash, and you'll keep up with it?
Yeah.
All right, all right, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. So now we have a, a formate coming in?
Who are you, sir?
Uh, I'm Tyler, and I'm gonna be their review engineer, okay?
Actually, we're.
A, a formate plan that I think the board was considering tonight?
Yes.
I haven't seen it, so, we have it.
He didn't go play for another club, did he? I'll be careful, I don't wanna know.
Duxbury is doing, Duxbury has a group over at Starland, and his friends are like.
Swear at me and everything?
And so he went with his friend. His coach left, though, last season.
Who, Matt?
Um, no.
Tim? Oh, Scott Alexander? Oh, he's still there? He's still part-time, yeah. He's got, he's a minister, so he's doing his block, he's organizing.
But mostly, he, he wanted, he's gonna go with that Duxbury crew, so that he can play with his friends.
All right, that won't be too hard, okay.
He'll come around again.
Becky, Becky, you're on time.
Yeah, we're on time for eight-thirty.
I don't, I don't see them yet, but the Russell Field is here if you wanna switch the.
Was eight-thirty before now?
Yeah.
Yeah, do you have?
That's what I'm here for.
Oh, you're here for the formate?
Yeah, the Mylar's here, the, the applications.
So Pete is here for the formate?
Yeah, actually, I guess you guys could look at it.
No, no, Peter, are you here?
Oh, I'm sorry, so they're not.
He's here for the applicant.
Oh, okay, all right, I, I thought I would be coming. So here's the, here it is.
Thanks, Tyler.
Good to see you. We'll be in touch, I'm sure, oh, yeah.
Uh, yeah, that's, that is pretty simple, what I think.
Yeah, I think the, the whole intent, my understanding, is that this gentleman here, or this family here, sold this parcel to this person so that they could put it cool in and use the setbacks.
Oh, so it's really just a little piece of land?
Yeah, just this parcel, eh?
It's this piece here?
Correct, and it's still, it, it doesn't make the lot, it doesn't make this lot non-conforming in any respects.
And it makes that one more conforming.
Correct, and it gives them room to put in a pool or whatever it was that they want.
So they don't need to do the ZBA for any kind of variance.
Exactly, that was the goal.
That's great.
Which is probably better, okay.
We like that.
Yeah, seems easy.
So were they currently non-conforming then, they were?
No, they just wanna put in their pool.
I see, so they wanna become.
They wouldn't need the setbacks, and they think there's a shed that they were thinking about doing, but that, that's.
This is very unusual.
It's a very, yeah.
We never get someone to come in and make it conform.
I'll make a motion that when I have the courts, I'll make the A form.
Second.
All in favor? All right.
That's almost heroic.
I had nothing to do with it, but I'd like to take credit for it, but.
Yeah, right?
Wow, that's terrific.
I was thinking about this today. Okay, so.
Twenty-six?
Yeah, twenty-six.
That was easy, thank you, Pete.
Well, Mr. Field is here, we, we can get started on this early, which is great, Matthew.
Yeah, I'm there in the hallway, just grabbing. So I think you're off, so.
This is quite something.
What happened? Did they approve it tonight?
They approved it, yeah.
He approved it?
They approved it.
We haven't read it, so the bottom line is they approved it.
They approved it, yes. Absolutely, yeah.
What's that?
The, uh, the water se- But, interesting, read, read that, because it's got some conditions in it. But they're, they're typical forty-B conditions, but we may wanna have a conversation with the ZBA about conditioning this.
What do you mean conditioning?
Why can't, why can't, why can't they go to the, why can't they go to the twenty-three units?
Bingo!
Good night, folks, thanks again.
Good night, thank you, Peter.
Bingo! I circled twenty, I circled the number twenty-three, and I looked at no less than.
Right, fourteen.
Fourteen?
Go to the twenty-three, so we're compliant, and stops it all.
Exactly.
That's what they should do. Fifty-six units.
Can it be required, or would the applicant have to agree to it?
Yes, ZBA i- is the one, you can put that right in.
Okay, so do we need to see if we can have a meeting with the ZBA about this?
I think we should.
Okay, so do you want me to ask them for a joint meeting, or do we want someone to go to their meeting? We can have a joint meeting, we've been told that several times.
I wouldn't wanna end up in a lawsuit over it. I would say, I remember with the board's recommendation.
We've been told by the, we've been told explicitly that we can have joint meetings.
Yeah, I think as long as each board, you know, properly puts the agenda and stuff.
We asked that question of town council several times.
No, I don't trust town council, but anyway.
I think we're better off talking to them and, and letting them know our concerns and ideas than not, and it's, it's gonna be their decision.
No, I understand, I think it's probably good if the, this board has a discussion, comes up with what they want, and then has somebody, the chairman, go.
Or we could have a letter from the chair, you know, talking about our discussion and some of the things that we thought about.
Right, cause originally, remember, they told us we could take in, the boards could have input with, through a letter based on what our concerns were about that proposal. But when they're making a ruling on it, they're gonna, it's gonna come before them, it may, it may not be something you want the board.
Well, we don't wanna, we don't wanna be a part of that.
Correct.
We don't wanna be part of that hearing.
No.
No, and that's why I'm saying even a meeting ahead of that.
Yeah, you kinda wanna informally say, this is what the board thinks would be a good option.
And it would be an informal meeting, it wouldn't be a, you know, a.
Wouldn't be a public hearing, but it would be an open meeting. An open meeting as opposed to a public hearing. So, are we gonna ask them to have an open meeting with us, or are we going to try to formulate a letter? And if so, what are we gonna put in the letter?
I think the easiest way would be to formulate the letter and just forward a letter to them.
But I, I would suggest that you, even if you do the letter, I'd still suggest that you at least have one person to sort of verbally talk to them, because it really, you know, otherwise it's sort of gonna forget, but to have a person actually.
I don't necessarily know you wanna have it, but if, if something came down and, and, you know, it's like the planning board's trying to have.
Conspire with the CPK?
Correct.
For better zone?
Correct. Trust me, trust me.
A better decision-making.
Especially if we're asking for the, you're asking for the applicant to actually lose.
Yeah, well, I think, I think, I think that a good compromise here would be the letter and the presentation by the, by the board chair to have a discussion.
Right.
All right, so, but we have to talk about what that letter would look like.
Yeah.
But for now, we have Mr. Field here with the discussion on the site plan.
Well, we already voted on the original condition.
So the signing of decision including conditions for previously approved site plan, so what do we?
The conditions have been written.
Just to clarify, um.
You missed one meeting, I feel like I'm.
And vote, and voted on.
Yeah, so, in talking with Russell, he was of the opinion, and I think he's correct, it makes sense that it would be, be better if the conditions mention that the existing use is there, or at least refer to it in some way, either say it's allowable, or at least state that it's there, which prob- which I probably should've included on the, the original version of the, of the decision and conditions.
Let me ask you this, the, did the petition, so in your, your, um, in, in this summary, Matthew?
Yeah.
On this page? The, the initial petition for site plan approval, did it mention current business operations?
Um.
Do we have the site plan application in front of us?
I guess maybe only in the sense that it showed it on the drawings.
The application would've discussed what business operations.
You know, one of the, I mean, one of the things that all is.
That that was established at the beginning of the process.
Yeah, do, do you have the site plan application? We can take a quick look.
I have it here, you know, I think for, for most of these site plans and submissions, part of the problem is that the applications generally don't say much about use necessarily, you know.
So maybe we need to fix that in our application. Can I take a quick look?
Yeah, I mean, the actual application is, uh.
Can I just take a look at the file?
I think probably the original drawings probably showed the, which of course were part of the application, probably showed.
I'm looking for the, the other letter that came with it.
Well, isn't the use, isn't that why they come to us to make sure they're in the right designs?
No, it is right there, actually, actually, it's in the, it's in the public hearing notice, guys. The public hearing notice says this access is to serve the current business operations on the site, the storage of empty dumpster containers. So that was in the notice?
Well, that's what I wrote, but actually here is, this was with the application, I assume, and that actually does explain, I guess, I assume.
It's been established.
Correct.
Existing container storage area.
You been there for a hundred years?
Eighteen.
Eighteen years, and now I know where we're at. Eighteen years and now I know where we're at.
But but my concern is that we gave the public notice, and we did give the public notice of that as part of what we were considering on this site plan.
But first, you only, you only have a chance.
Yeah, yeah, I see.
Do you see what I'm saying?
I absolutely see what you're saying, yeah.
Yes, so the public got notice that, that we were considering an application to provide access to the existing.
Yes, right.
Current business operations, the storage of empty dumpster containers was in our notice to the public as part of the public hearing process. So in that sense, you were very prescient, Matthew, to make sure that that was very specifically stated.
It should, I think it should say, and the storage of all, because it's, the business is not the storage of dumpster containers, it's just part of my equipment.
Right.
Right.
That's what we.
But that's been established.
Right, it's just.
As part of the site plan, it's, it's there.
You don't have a recycling center there, you have a empty container lot.
Yeah.
Cause serving the container business, yeah.
All of this is my, my equipment from my.
So we're all signed off on it, did we sign them the last time?
No.
Okay.
We didn't sign, we approved them, and then they were gonna write them up.
Yeah, cuz at the time, I just showed you guys the draft, yeah.
And they're gonna approve.
Right. And was everyone that's here, here for the approval?
Yeah, apparently, the four of us.
Okay.
See, this is complicated by the fact that, and I hadn't seen this letter before actually, or I don't recall seeing it. George Ferry sent them a letter in November. That said, it's come to our attention that the property is not in compliance, the planning board is waiting for your submission of a site plan, and the zoning board is waiting for your submission of a special permit for outdoor storage. But the special permit for outdoor storage under our bylaws would be the outdoor storage of goods for sale.
For sale, yeah.
Not the outdoor storage of equipment used in a business.
Storage.
And we can, and we can decide whether that is required or not.
We can give a site plan.
That's, that's what he said, like, he wanted to come.
And we do not see that it's being required under the bylaws, so we're giving site plan approval without conditioning it upon the special permit.
And we just, we don't, you know, right. Exactly.
Right.
Because we don't think that's required.
Any, any change in, any change in use would require another site plan.
Exactly.
Yeah, just in general, anytime there's a change in use on any site plan, it requires a new site plan.
So how, how do we, um, wrap this up?
So I think, uh, so I think that what Matthew is proposing, going back to, I'm gonna give you the pile back so you don't accuse me of stealing it. So what Matthew's proposing is that in a couple locations, on the decision, that we would refer to the existing use of the site, maybe we should say, including the storage of empty dumpster containers.
Isn't that the total use of that property? There is no other use, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just my business, that's it.
That's what you do, you, you drop them off, you pick them up.
You don't have like an office there, right?
Oh, no, no. No, the office is in such a, it's just, uh, we just run the, the company out of, just a.
Um, so Matthew's proposing that we, um, refer to the dumpster containers in a few locations, but otherwise, I take it you guys at the meeting I missed already read through all of these conditions?
Yep.
So the question is whether or not we will approve a modification of the decision of the board to include the lang, the highlighted language specifically referring to the current business operation on the site, the storage of empty dumpster containers, as indicated in the draft dated two twenty-six.
Did you make that as a motion?
I'm asking if that's the motion someone would wanna make.
Well, I, I'll make that motion if we can approve it and get it printed out and sign it.
Tonight?
Tonight.
I have got it, yeah.
Okay, Matthew, can you?
I've got both, I've got both options, actually.
Okay, alright.
Oh, you have both options.
I do, yeah.
Alright, so we have the option to, if, if, if that motion is made and approved, then we will sign the decision tonight.
Yes.
With the modified language, can I sign even though I wasn't here to vote the approvals last time?
Yeah, but you're but, you're voting for Mark, okay.
I granted site plan approval, but I wasn't here to vote the decision, the, the conditions.
Conditions. So we, aren't we redoing the conditions?
We're redoing the conditions, that's my problem, and we don't really need to redo the conditions.
But basically, like, just, like, going by this, we're gonna change it, and therefore should be allowed to sign it.
I guess so.
Aren't we, aren't we signing the, the auction with all the conditions on it tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, so how about we, we vote to, to sign the decision with the conditions as amended in Matthew's case here.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Matthew, we need a decision to sign.
Alright, I got it right here.
Oh, it's hard now.
Yeah.
Um. That's interesting.
Well done.
Um, let's see, what else there was on here? Oh, so we have a public recor, this is actually a pretty important administrative matter which doesn't affect you, but we'll start to move on while we're signing, if you don't mind.
Yeah, so you guys are.
I don't mind at all.
You've done your work.
Um, so there was a public records request regarding three forty-six Washington Street, and there's a request for our minutes. We're behind in approving minutes, and so the question is whether we should release a draft version of the minutes, or can we sign any of those minutes tonight?
Question is, is that if you had a full board, wouldn't most people have to be there?
So technically, we've been told that we can.
We'd have to approve them, number one.
Technically, we've been told that we don't need the same members of the board to approve minutes, as the people who attended the meeting.
Yeah, but I, I also don't want the optics of making it look like we're stonewalling the minutes.
No, but how, but how.
They're public record.
So my question is, is that how can you approve something when the, a person that wasn't, that was sitting at the meeting, isn't here to say, yeah, that's exactly what I said?
But if we have a quorum present to approve them.
No, I understand that, but if you have a quorum of people who, who weren't totally at that meeting, you see where I'm going?
Yeah.
No, but we always have to have a quorum of the members present at the meeting for the minutes.
Yes, although town council has told us that's not true.
Well, we always do it that way.
I know, but town council.
So we do it that, we do it the Paul's recommend.
Right.
Right, right.
Just because it's, because, you know, someone could later say is that, I, I, I wasn't there when they took that, that is not exactly what I said.
Oh, that, we, we should take really seriously the approval of the minutes on a timely basis, cuz there are public record.
Right.
So you have to make sure that, like, people show up to respect.
Yeah, that would help.
So, at the, at the present, I can't solve the, the issue of, of having a sufficient quorum to approve minutes, but, so.
So I would make, I would, I would recommend that we approve the minutes in question in order to be able to release them to the public record.
Okay, so which minutes do we have?
In this case.
So just to, yeah, I've got them all, just to clarify one thing, uh, either, I mean, either way, they're gonna release, be released, uh, it's just a question of whether we release draft or a food version, um.
But if we could release an approved version, I think that's even better.
It's better, I think it's definitely better, yeah, yeah. Uh, but yeah, otherwise, we, we have to, what's it required to release?
But I also don't wanna make it look like we're holding up the release of minutes.
Yeah, I think that's, especially in this case, the optics are not there, yeah, especially given the attention.
Cause we're not doing it on purpose.
Right.
Don't we have to sign the last page as well as that other page?
You start.
I think so.
Oh, yeah, um, and also, I guess, sign the drawings as well, just the first page, uh.
Just, just one page?
Yeah, just.
Just leave it, they will come with the page here.
Yeah, just the first page of each of the three sets.
Yeah, sign this first.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Can we just sign with a regular pen?
Yeah, yeah, they're not Mylar, so, thanks.
And we're gonna keep a copy, is that how it works?
Are we signing this as of two twenty-six?
Uh, yeah, I think just put today's date on it, yeah, makes sense. Thanks.
Hey, Jesus, I thought, I thought you guys would have two other members here tonight. At least.
So Dan was sick, and he sent a text today that he was sick, I'm not sure what's going on with him.
Oh, we, we know what's going on with.
Jim?
Jim.
He's out of town.
He's out of town, but usually that hasn't been this close of an issue. Because usually we have.
So you got some, you got somebody running?
I, I gotta make sure he, yeah, takes the papers out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think John Shoal.
Yeah, that's what Maryam told me, too, that he's gonna run, that's what Maryam said.
Who's gonna run?
Do you know Susie?
Uh, John Shoal, or something.
She's in the P E F stuff.
Andy, do you know him?
Yeah, I know him.
You alright?
Yeah, it's a good fact.
Is she on the board?
She was on my street.
She on board?
He does, was he named a board?
He's on the state of the neighborhood?
No, no, that's Suzanne Scroggins.
That's who I was thinking of, okay, I don't know anything.
I think you're on the run, the run board.
Alright, um, so do we have minutes that we can release?
Was it D, wasn't it N?
Yeah, I couldn't, I got them all here.
He's on the Republican tab, I mean.
Now, what else you got, boss?
Um, these minutes is the big thing.
Oh, okay.
Oh my god.
So December fourth, Andy, Paul, Brian, and Dan. December eighteenth, Becky, Tom, Paul.
You want to sign it?
Uh, just so you have them.
Oh.
They can't vote on it unless you say it.
No, Ian. Okay, this is the problem. We don't, we don't, for the December fourth and December eighteenth hearing meetings, we don't have a quorum of people who are present at this.
But we can still vote the minutes.
We can.
Mm-hmm, if Paul is willing to.
Well, no, no, I'm just, I'm just writing up topics.
But this question, do, for this, do we just need the majority of the people who are present tonight, or the majority of the board?
We can vote the minutes, any, well, town council is advised that we can vote the minutes regardless of, of who was present, if we've got a quorum of the board.
Yes, we have been told that.
And everyone can read the minutes and decide whether they want to approve them or not. Our practice has been to only approve the minutes with a quorum of those present.
Right, people who were there.
Right, who were there.
So for, I'm sorry, for site plan approval, it's okay, just, uh, the board just decided the first page, right? I think, cuz I mean, they've got the stamps on, they've got the signature stamps on the other pages too, but I don't think that's necessary.
Well, we will follow in your direction.
Yeah, yeah, I think in the past, they've gone to the first page, so I think that should be okay. So I think you guys are all set, I believe, uh, you can get one of these, I'm sorry, I just wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, finish that up. So the January twenty-second and February fifth, we have four of us here tonight who were at both of those meetings.
Okay, let's do those.
So those two, we're, we have no problem with, December fourth and December eighteenth is where we're.
We'll be in touch about the, the actual decision, the document.
Okay.
Andy, you were the person who was not there on December eighteenth, so you could choose to vote on December eighteenth even though you weren't present.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Yeah.
Thank you guys.
You took care.
Um, December fourth, Andy and Paul were here, so Tom and I would be making a decision to vote on minutes who were not present for. Um, Paul actually was at all four of these meetings, so it's not a dilemma for him.
I gotta, I gotta find out what these people are doing, didn't, didn't he abstain?
But he can still vote the minutes.
I can still vote the minutes.
He can still vote the minutes, so.
And who's asking for these?
Um, I think the, the, about his group is asking for these minutes.
Probably for a potential lawsuit.
This, December fourth has nothing to do with.
Three forty-six.
Yeah, yeah, I can't get the two minutes, but I'll.
Three forty-six.
Oh, you'll actually get the original eventually.
Okay.
I think you need to clean them up.
No, it's, no, it's just gonna be great. Well, we should clean it up anyway, yeah.
Alright, no, no.
Okay, yeah, there, there's nothing with, with two forty-six, there.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you, alright. Tom, I'll probably touch on like in the next two or three days, definitely.
Sounds good, thanks.
Yeah, so I guess for the minutes, just let me know which ones you want me to discuss.
Well, I don't have a, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of, uh, December fourth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I was at all of them somewhere.
I was at that one, I chaired, I chaired that one, I, I don't even remember doing that, it's only December fourth.
Yeah, I was sick as a dog.
That's right, you were sick that time.
You put a, you put a business in town to take care of that.
Take care of what?
Short time memory?
Oh, yeah, I know, I, I.
Alright, there's the one.
What'd you say?
What, what?
You bring that up again.
There's a, a what business?
Okay, uh, December eighteen, um.
I wasn't here.
You weren't here.
This is one I, I, I agree to, you know.
Oh, you know what, I see a little typo, one accessory furnace building. It's not a furnace building.
Yeah, I think it, I think it is, that's what they described it as, I believe.
F U R N A C E?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's like where they're gonna put this, Dan was saying for biomass or something, this little furnace to heat, I guess to heat the buildings, like, right?
Yeah, it's probably, probably wood, wood burning stove.
It's on the drawings, yeah.
No, I thought there were gonna be two office buildings on the site.
Right, but there's probably the fuel source.
Yeah, two, that is consisting of total of.
And.
Oh, plus the accessory building, oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
I thought that was one of the two buildings, okay, I'm good.
Okay. Um, yeah, I suspect maybe it's like a, they'll have like a, like you said, a wood stove, so it's just much, it's, it's much.
Yeah, they feed in four foot, four foot logs, you think they're that.
Says he's got wood.
Yeah, pump, pump the heater.
Oh. Uh, this one is a lot of work, okay.
Um, didn't we agree that the letters be appended to the minutes of the meeting?
Yeah, so for this one, December eighteen, are we still on December eighteen, there was just the one letter, and then for February fifth.
Yeah. Oh, and you did append it, okay.
Yeah, for February fifth, I penned it like three letters.
And C one, oh, excellent, okay.
Okay, good.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve, um.
I won't make the motion since I wasn't here, but I would.
I'll make the motion.
Do we approve the minutes of December eighteen?
I'll second it.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we have two minutes, um, on our bill. Um, now, January twenty second?
Yeah, so January eighth actually already was approved, uh. Uh, this one is January twenty second.
Um.
Uh, this was the trial, oh my god, this one took so long to do, trial pages. I need to get more efficient, I've done too much of a perfectionist through this notice. Yeah, this is like my, this is like my masterpiece.
Castle, keep it down.
Actually, this one, January twenty second, was the most sort of substantive meeting about the three forty six Washington.
Oh. Are you saying note, Mr. Goughton's meaning was unclear here? That feels a little editorial.
Yeah, well, he, he left out, he like forgot to say a few words or something, um, I mean, I can change it if you want, um.
Yeah, I think we should, I, I don't like that. In, I don't know.
It was kind of weird, it sounded like, it'll be opened from, it'll be opened from like.
It said, open two or.
Page six.
Five or six?
Page six.
I mean, it honestly, it was like, he kind of, I think he sort of got jumped up a little bit, so he'd get into the complexities of, I mean, what he said, I mean, I, I listened to the recording like three or four times, and it just like.
Right, but the note that the meaning was unclear, I think is an editorial note, as opposed to simply saying what he did say or didn't say.
Yeah.
So in this case, I'm thinking he said it would be permissible to insert.
Yeah, I mean, what, yeah, I could take it out, I mean, what he said was literally, sort of.
If he said literally what's there.
Then that's all we need to do.
Then that's all we need to say, but I think we removed the note.
Yeah, that's all we need to say.
Even though I can understand us saying it's not us who are incomprehensible.
Oh, yeah.
That's not our, that's not our problem, really.
Is the note up, um, might the note I put in higher on page six, okay, where it says, on the first paragraph of page six, uh, where I wrote, Mr. Goughton was presumably referring to each other.
Yes, take that out.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, because we're not, we, we.
We shouldn't be inferring.
Just reporting, yeah.
It's not a fact.
Yeah, okay.
So no editorializing.
Yeah, normally I don't do that, I don't know why.
It places doubt on the facts.
Even great painters have problems, you know.
Well, in fact, also on the top of page eight, I put in another one of the, uh.
Oh, you're on a roll, huh?
Well, cause he, 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 he put, it seemed like he was saying the wrong thing.
That's, but that's his job.
Yeah, that's true.
He was supposed to report the news, not become the news.
Yeah.
Oh.
They left the sentence, if the letter didn't become a fact, report the legend. You guys saying.
Yeah, again, this actually seems to be on page eight.
Well, just, I throw in actually, it seems in the same sentence is a little.
No, but I don't think we should correct. If he.
Yeah, I can cross it.
I, I think you just take that all together, we don't need to be this specific, he quoted from the zoning bylaws, and then take out the, the reference to the page number.
Yep.
Altogether.
Yep.
He quoted from the zoning bylaws, which state that the agricultural use is, and state what he quoted, but these things aren't a verbatim record of what happened, so.
If they want that, they can get the tape.
They can get the tape and do their own verbatim.
Yeah.
There's a court reporter who will take the tape and turn it into a verbatim record. Our goal is to add, is to state the, um. The goal of the minutes is just to give the.
So, yeah, there's the other note.
Colored notice of what was discussed.
Yeah, there's the other note here on page eight too, Chip Tech also did wood waste processing and mulch making.
Yeah, again, that's. It's only a record of what happened, it's not a brief of what, it's not like a legal brief where we're trying to.
Build the case.
Build the case for events.
So take out that one too, Chip Tech.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think I'm, a lot of the stuff, I've been too much of a perfectionist, I'm gonna try to be more efficient.
Well, yeah.
All you gotta do, all you gotta do is listen to the tape, I guess, and just take it down, I know it's hard enough.
Yeah.
Well, no, I mean, the other thing is sometimes, I've, I've seen plenty of minutes that just say.
In general, sure.
Yeah, you know, a discussion ensued about this subject, period. And so there's always a question, and I think our town council wants us to be a little more inclusive than that.
Yeah.
But, um.
But the other doc, the document you have is, is the tape, so.
Yeah, and like, um, I mean, I try to be aware that, that what, you know, I talk about the minutes, that is sort of what people are gonna refer to for a longer time.
I would, I would figure out, I would figure out how much it costs to copy the tape. Cause you're, you're gonna be asked for it.
Oh, you think we'll be asked for it?
Oh my god, yes.
Yeah, we, I mean, the, the, the request.
Everyone.
The, the public records request we got, it does include the recording, uh, so we'll give it. But it's actually, it's amazing how rarely we do get asked for the recording, I mean, this is the first time.
This is the, listen, you know, you've had a lot of them get sued before, so, yeah, this will be the first time.
Yeah.
But this is, this will go that route.
Yeah, yeah, it's quite possible.
Quite likely.
You think so?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe, I've been here.
Based on what?
Based on, you know, but people can, people will sue your family then, right, this, this, these people are gonna take this to court. Definitely.
So on page eleven.
Whether right or wrong.
In the third paragraph. Um, the two site visits were of three forty six Washington Street and the Marshfield operation, we did not have, we did not plan a site visit at the current operation on Medicaid Street.
No, we didn't.
Oh yeah, that was just, yeah, I should probably, I mean, that was what he suggested at the time, but then eventually the board didn't decide to do that. But I can take that out because it's, it might be confusing people.
Yeah, we, we didn't feel that.
Okay. So just two site visits? Should we make a motion to approve the minutes with those changes?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the, uh, as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um, and then do we have February fifth minutes, Chuck?
Uh, yeah.
Hey kids, it's past my bedtime.
All right.
Do it quick.
So just do this real quick, and then, the only other thing, does anyone have badges as a planning board member?
Badges? No badges.
So apparently.
So Sabrina was, I'm sorry.
Sabrina thought there may be some old badges hanging around from before my time.
You don't need no stinking badges. Try to, uh.
Oh, for like site walks?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, apparently in the old days, some of the boards and commission members actually had badges, uh.
Try to, uh, uh.
Ryan?
No.
Oh, Jesus, this is, oh, so you got, you got the appended material here, great.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the one that had loaded up.
Good.
Jim knows? No. My mind just went blank, who was, who was Matthew's predecessor?
Oh, man.
Yeah, but she, she was just in here just before I came in.
Yeah.
So it's twenty, I don't know, that would be, yeah, I don't think we ever had badges.
Basically, apparently the Safford's office is trying to sort of get all the badges back, and there are just like a few people.
Well, who did you show them to?
On other boards, I don't know, but there are a few people on some other boards who apparently are resisting turning in their badges, cause they enjoy, I guess they like the feeling of like having the badges.
Wow.
Yeah. Does this, do they have any badges on Concon?
No, they do in our Board of Health though.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but I think the Board of Health, there's a reason the Board of Health does. Yeah, they, they, they have, they have real badges, like police badges.
Oh.
I think they do. Yeah, they do.
Well, because they have some enforcement.
Authority, right, right.
Yeah.
I guess the commissioners that went down, uh, D P W commissioners had them, but they, they were left, we never, we never received that.
Yeah, so for the fifth, I appended all those, the various things, um, you guys asked me to append. With the one exception at the very end, there was another eighteen pages of, um, of attachments to the, the last letter that I, that I left out. Uh, I'll have a second item if you want me to.
Um, uh, okay, so Tom needs to get going, did everyone have a chance to look through the minutes of, um, February fifth?
I'm going for it now.
And we do have a quorum of, of members who are present on February fifth.
And for this one, I'm pretty sure I didn't use any of those.
I didn't see any.
Yeah. Except for where I said, see, but I didn't choose. There was one person who never says that, never stated her name, I'm pretty sure it was Marie Robinson, but I, I didn't wanna say her, so it's kind of censure.
God, do we have to relive this?
Um, so Matthew, why are there a little messy checklist here of issues?
Yeah, well, I do too, yeah.
Okay, um.
So I'll make a, a motion that we approve the minutes of February fifth, twenty eighteen, as submitted.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, no. Um, there's a decision on the Z B A granting urban oil variances in the folder, that's probably gonna become very pertinent to us. King Collision and Schuster Street is proposing to build a canopy covering several spaces in the parking lot with solar panels.
Mm-hmm.
Should they go through full site plan review process, it's on our agenda as an informal from March nineteen?
Um, I don't, I don't, because, because the solar bylaw that we passed, I think they.
I know, but you're putting a structure up.
Oh, they're, they're, they're gonna build a structure.
That'd be like sort of a canopy over the parking lot, yeah.
Right, they're gonna build this.
So then I'm gonna put on top of an existing structure.
Correct.
And they leave the two sites there.
Yeah, but is it full site plan or can we do a reduced, um.
That's, that's normal.
They know, but, but they're, they don't understand my idea.
A reduced violation, if that's all they're changing?
Yeah, why don't I have them come in March twelfth, maybe?
For an informal?
Uh, and just in formal, yeah, so you guys can kind of sort of discuss that, yeah.
For an informal, yeah.
Okay. Um, decision on mass housing, where's the march forty B, how are we gonna handle my letter to Z B A, are we, should I?
What, do we have time?
What are we gonna say?
Can we?
I would just.
Well, first, uh, it's, I think we need a little time to, to, to kind of go through it, I think everyone should read that letter from them.
Okay.
And then come to the next meeting with some things, and we have a little time.
Okay.
When is that, when is their, uh, hearing?
Yeah.
When is their, do they have a hearing yet?
I don't think so, I'm not gonna, no, I don't think so.
We gotta find out when the hearing is, we wanna have, you wanna have a discussion prior to.
There's some, there's some conditions that they've put in this, uh, mass housing approval, but they're probably border played as it relates to forty B.
Correct.
Um, which is okay, but, um, one of the reasons why they said yes to this is that Pembroke is short by twenty-three.
Units.
Units.
I think we need to ask for twenty-three units.
And he's got fifty-six going in there, and I think we should ask for the twenty-three.
Okay.
That's on the tab, I guess.
It's all right, it doesn't matter.
We can ask.
Yes.
We can ask?
You can ask, yeah.
No, but we can ask.
Always ask.
Yeah.
Or we can, we can strategize about what to ask, how to ask.
Remember. Uh, just remember this though.
Or, you know.
Just remember this, that the Z B A can also say that those units, the fourteen units are permanently, for, uh, um, you know, they don't sunset.
They don't anyway, do they?
Yes, they do, yes, they do, some of them sunset in twenty-five years, depends on what the, the Z B A does. That's why, it's not, that's why you lose, you constantly lose them, besides the ones that are houses that are sold off by relatives who don't, they don't really, either they, you don't go down and follow the.
They are being asked to do some things, they are being asked to do a, from this determination, to do an extensive traffic study.
Right, well, that's only because they're coming onto a very.
Yeah, but there are some conditions here.
Right.
Um.
Those are all the ones that were put into.
And I guess the, the, the Z B A needs to explore them more fully during the public hearing process.
Right.
Those conditions, and we would, I think we would concur, we should read them and concur with them.
The only other thing that wasn't, I think, on their proposal was originally the treatment plant. Going from remembering some of the conversations that there's a treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant that has to be built, I don't know, that shows up on the plans.
Uh, no, they say something about, um, Title five.
I hope we're also applying to the State D O T for improving the roadway on Route one thirty-nine, given the substantial traffic.
Well, first off, I think that may not be, happen because they just did improvement there.
There? By water street?
Yes, they just paved, put in, in the sidewalks, yeah, they've already done it, they already did an improvement on one thirty-nine.
In that area?
Right down, right down from, from, uh, from fifty, fifty three, down past to the lights, by stop and shop, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, they just resurfaced it a couple of years ago.
And then noticed them.
Couple of years ago.
Okay.
Well, it doesn't take long, you know, all of a sudden, you know, it's like when you paint the house, and all of a sudden it starts to have smudges all over it.
Yeah, it's old. Yeah.
Doesn't look as good.
Yeah, but that was based on, that improved, that was not based on having an extra fifty-six units of housing in that area.
Yeah, but it's not, think about it, what, what are you gonna do, you're gonna put a light there, you have a diagonal water street that cuts across it, how are you gonna make an improvement?
What we really need is a better improvement at Cross Street. That whole Cross Street. Um, that whole, you know, coming off a Cross Street, coming into one thirty-nine.
And where it goes from two to one, there's always somebody who has to pass it.
Goes from two to one, that's enough.
But the, 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 the problem is, is the way the original roads were laid out and how it, how that is, the intersection there would be, think about it, it'd be on a bias, it, it, you know, it come, it'd be very difficult, it'd be very large, uh, you don't have to put lights there, how are you gonna make that improvement?
We could, we could always put a.
We can't even get a light at.
We could put a, a roundabout.
Now, that's a thought.
That I would like to see.
All right, um, so we'll think about this, come back at the next meeting with some suggestions as to how we might try to be heard on that.
We may also wanna take a look at that, um, the Z B A also has that list of conditions that, um, we talked about the last time we got together with them. They, they actually put one together for forty B proposals, we should just take a look at it.
Oh, Matthew, can you get a copy of that?
Sorry, set it up again.
They had a, uh, they, Z B A had come up with a, um, sort of, uh, a set of rules for, for forty B applications.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
That was sort of a set of standard rules that I think complement and pay to prepare for them.
Yeah, this, okay, yeah, I remember this, yeah, yeah.
And, and we, we lost track of those, so if we could have them. And, and we, we lost track of those, so if we could have them for that discussion about River Marsh, that would be helpful.
Be, because we, we could make some suggestions to, those will basically be the conditions, that, the things that they can condition under law.
Right, I mean, they may have to make some improvements on Water Street, widening from them to that intersection, you know, because they're, it is narrow.
It's very narrow.
Um, I think the rest of this can wait, or we can try to have it offline?
Yeah.
Actually, uh.
Yeah.
I think those are the most urgent things we had to deal with today.
So they're just gonna mean, uh, about this today.
About mass housing, is, the, forty B?
Yeah, yeah, now that I think about it, who I walked by, would have been affected, she was on Water Street.
Oh.
I'm wondering, did they have a meeting tonight about it?
There was a very large meeting downstairs, I don't know what it was about, do you?
Concom? Well, well, Concom, uh, wait a sec, for.
Well, it was Z B A, I'm thinking it might have been.
I know the selectmen.
Oh, was Concom doing three forty-six Washington today?
Concom. Yeah, Concom was doing three forty-six on the selectman.
Yeah.
Oh, so that's why it was credited, yeah.
It wasn't, we had two, two people.
Oh, was it?
I think it was for the selectman, the selectman went in executive session for something relating to, uh, River Marsh, actually.
Oh, um.
See, that's what, that's what I'm trying to, that's what it was about.
So people were here for River Marsh, but then they went into executive session, didn't really talk about it publicly.
Right, that's why they're in the hallway.
Ah.
Okay, alright, so there may be more going on than we realize as well?
So maybe, maybe after the talk, we'll see.
Yeah, but we, but.
Okay, we can still.
But we have a little bit of influence over this, uh, well, we don't have any direct influence over it, we can, we can have input, right.
We can have input.
Yeah, and apparently for River Marsh also, the, apparently from what I've, I've been told, the, then some of the neighbors have hired an attorney too, so they've got, they're, they're sort of going, you know, full blast, I guess, from that.
At River Marsh?
Uh, it sounds like, I mean, they've got an attorney, I mean, whether they actually, I mean, it's, I'd imagine.
Very difficult to find a one-chicka approval.
I'd imagine they're basically in the, in the Z B A process.
This, this is such a, of, an approval, I mean, this, this is so clear.
Yeah.
Well, and it's easier for the county to find than the neighbors, cause the neighbors, it just sounds like not in my backyard.
Now, now it's just going to the Z B A making the conditions.
Cause the neighbors, it just sounds like not in my backyard.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um.
Not in the block, total backyard.
Well, I mean, that is such a, really environmental.
Madam Chairman.
Okay, um, may we let Mister Urban go home?
Sensible place.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great.
It really is a shame.
I don't know that, how you hooked me to come up here today.